For our April 20th, 2017 Student Citizen of the Month Awards, this is one of our most favorite things to do in the town of Gilbert, where we get to honor you, our students, and the families and the teachers who assist. On that note, we just wanted to highlight that the pillar of the month, which many of you in your schools are often focused on, is trustworthiness. Also, we have amazing sponsors. So in the certificate, bags, boxes, envelopes that your students are going to get tonight, we have two gift certificates. One for Sal's Gilbert Pizza, just across the street, and the other is for Sub-Zero Ice Cream, where science and ice cream combine, and it's fascinating experience, and great help there from the Vander Mullen family, who own Sub-Zero, always supporting our schools. We do believe in education in the town of Gilbert. If you are a teacher, or educator, or a school administrator, or part of total school district administration, will you please stand so that we can honor you? It's a Thursday night. They could be home grading papers, or doing something with their families, and they're here tonight, still supporting students in every way. Thank you so much for being here. On that note, we need some help. Is this your sister? Would she help us? Laura, can you help us? Do you want to pick a name? Okay. Pick one of those out. In this bucket are all of the names of the teachers who submitted, student citizens, tonight. Thank you for your help. You want to go sit with your mom?
Come back.
Okay. She actually wants to stay here with me. You're so cute.
She's cute.
All right. We have a $25 Frost Gelato gift card for one of our teachers who submitted tonight, and thank you for helping pick. You picked Mrs. Groen from Spectrum Elementary. Is Mrs. Groen here? She might not... Maybe she's at home grading papers. That's what happens. We'll make sure she gets this. So thank you so much. With that, we do this pretty efficiently, and we do this in three different groups. The first group is elementary schools with the last name A to J. So Ashland Ranch, actually, to Islands Elementary. If you go to one of those schools and you're here for Student Citizen of the Month, we want you to come forward and line up right here. Councilmember Ray will assist. On that note, I should introduce our fellow council members, and maybe myself. Councilmember Ray. Vice Mayor Victor Peterson. He gets to read the names. That's no tall, no small task. Councilmember Jared Taylor. Councilmember Bridgette Peterson. And over there, Councilmember Eddie Cook is with us. Councilmember Scott Anderson is excused tonight, so... And I am Jen Daniels, Mayor of Gilbert. Parents, please feel free to come down in this section when your child... This is the best spot for the photos. Also, we have Ciara... Kira. It's spelled C-I-A-R-A, so I always want to call her Ciara. Kira's here from our Gilbert Digital team. She's going to be taking pictures that will be up on our Facebook account tonight. You're welcome to get one of those professional photos off of the Town's Gilbert Your Town Facebook page. And you're also welcome, obviously, to take your own as well, and we'll make sure we try to get the best angle for you. With that, I think we are ready to start. Let's do it.
All right. Starting with Ashland Ranch Elementary, Shannon Healy. I'll mention this before I proceed. If I say your name incorrectly, don't be afraid to let me know, and I'll repeat it. Okay. Next, from Bridges Elementary, Jordan Ransom. From Burke Elementary, Adeline Marshall. From Carroll Ray Ranch, Ava Laux. From Centennial Elementary, Sidney Jones. From Charlotte Patterson Elementary, Skylah Abramson. From Christ Greenfield Lutheran... Oh, excuse me. Welcome. From Christ Greenfield Lutheran, Kennedy Eubank. From Edgewood Prize Charter School, Keely Pires. From Findlay Farms Elementary, Micah Jones. From Gateway Point Elementary, Zoe Jones. From Gilbert Elementary, Lyra McNair Thacker. From Greenfield Elementary, Grady Heaps. From Highland Park Elementary, Ethan Wing. From Higley Traditional Academy, Kenna Ogles. It's Ogles. Kenna Ogles, thank you. Glad he told me. You bet. You're very welcome. From Houston Elementary, Cole Hunter. From Islands Elementary, Madison Purdy.
All right. We'll invite the entire group one up for a group photo really quickly, and then let you get on your way. Do a final round of applause for Group One. Thank you so much. You guys can go back with your families. We know that life is busy, so if your group has completed, you're welcome to leave. We'd like to invite Group Two now. That's the rest of our elementary school students to come forward. Thank you.
Are we ready? All the rest of the elementary should be up here at this point. This point of information there. Ready, mayor? No? All right. From Leading Edge Academy, Camia Madgett. Oh, good, because I'm sure I said that wrong. All right. From Mesquite Elementary, Damian Gonzalez. From Neely Traditional Academy, Neha Sharman. From Oak Tree Elementary, Antonio Carreria Cobal. Carriera. It's Carriera. I said that wrong. You just have to convince me I'm wrong, that's all. From Patterson Elementary, Cameron Cooper. From Pioneer Elementary, Zachary Galavies. Galavies. From Playa del Rey Elementary, Roman Jaramillo... Mio. Jaramillo! Oh! Of course, it's Jaramillo. The question... From Power Ranch Elementary, Skylar Simkins. From Riggs... Oh, sorry. From Riggs Elementary, Mondo Capita. From Santan Elementary, Jackson Windly. From Settlers Point Elementary, Faustina Tran. From Sonoma Ranch Elementary, Ariana Hernandez. It's actually Hernandez, but... From Spectrum Elementary, Herbert Michael Lawton. From Town Meadows Elementary, Samantha Gavin. From Val Vista Lakes Elementary, Zane Wiseman.
I saw a lot of future mayors and council members today in that group, both groups. This third group is all of our junior high and high school students, so if you'd please come down, and we'll get a chance to honor you.
Mixed. Very mixed. All right. First, we have from Campo Verde High, Maya Guerrero. From Canyon Valley High School, Austin Espinosa. From Cooley Middle School, Skylar Cantania. Catania, of course. From Edgewood Prize School, Gabby Moron. Moron. Morone, just to be clear. If I don't know, it starts to sound like Spanish. Just pardon me for that, but... Okay. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Clark Vidler. The one name I knew how to say. All right. From Gilbert High School, Madeline Bradshaw. Also from Gilbert High School, Destiny Houlihan. From Gilbert Junior High, Chance Lopez. Also from Gilbert Junior High, John Simpson. From Greenfield Junior High, Eduardo Roman. Could be Roman, just saying. Right. From Highland Junior High School, Nolan Watte. From Higley High School, Izzy Opfoel. I heard from a friend how to say her name. Cheated on that one. From Leading Edge Early College, Emma Schamberger. From Mesquite High School, Matthew McKillop. From Mesquite Junior High, Kinta Sedano. From Payne Junior High School, Kai Rochto. Rochto. From Perry High School, Louis Copeland. It's Copeland. From Sossaman Middle School, Mathias Beatty. It's Beatty. I'm striking out, guys. But I'm glad you're correcting me. That's good. All right. Sossaman Middle School as well, Hannah Napollen. And finally, from South Valley Junior High, Liren Parra. Or Para, I don't know.
All right, Group Three. Great job. Come on down for your group picture.
Bob? Do I have a mic that works? Is this mic live?
That mic's live.
Okay. Okay, let's stand over here, Bob. Yep. Okay, I'm joined here tonight with Bob Farren, member of the Parks and Rec Library Services Advisory Board, so thank you for being here tonight. And, you know, people with shiny pates like me and Councilmember Cook appreciate trees. So, this is a fun proclamation on Gilbert Arbor Day, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it's been around for a while, out of Nebraska since 1872. And this proclamation proclaims, let's see, I saw the date here, April 28, 2017, as Gilbert Arbor Day. We'd like to give this to Parks and Rec, and they just did a wonderful job focusing on the trees. They talked to some people that are on staff that focus on trees. Can't remember the technical name of it, maybe you can remember it, but arborist. Imagine that. That's very creative. But, Bob, anything you'd like to add on this proclamation?
No, I'll just accept on the behalf of the Parks and Rec Department and the board, and we try to keep you all shaded.
All right, very good. All right. One big cheer for all the trees in Gilbert for Arbor Day.
While they're taking that photo, we did do a fun Arbor Day presentation today at Queen of the Summer Center, where there was a great community-wide event where a lot of our students were there, learning more and more about the things the town does to make sure that we can serve and to celebrate Earth Day, which is also today. There's one other thing we wanted to highlight this evening. Kelly, post, Kelly, are you in the room? Oh, Kelly's here. I'm going to take sort of a point of personal privilege at the moment and ask you to, in reference to the slide that we have today, explain to our citizens exactly what happened yesterday and why we were jumping up and down and cheering from Town Hall. I'm not sure if anybody heard us, but we were, so, Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We were able to sell bonds yesterday in the market, and we had a fantastic day. It was very good. And so, we had some existing debt, and we were able to refund or refinance that and save $3.4 million. So, we'll be able to reduce the taxes that we spend on that and be able to use that for other things. We also were able to finance the new 2017 bonds for street's capacity. Overall, we have a 2.3% interest rate, which is fantastic for our borrowing, and it actually came in about $8.8 million lower than what we were anticipating when we put our initial numbers together, so we felt really good about the results there.
Big congratulations to Kelly. Also, Hocken Johansson, who's here, part of our financing team. This really is incredible. It has to do with the fact that this community is the most financially responsible community in the country. We have triple-A bond ratings. This directly impacts our ability to fund projects and to do infrastructure projects within our community. So, we're incredibly proud of the team that we have that works so hard every day to make that happen. Thank you. All right. At this point, we will turn to Councilmember Ray, who will assist us with the next portion.
Mayor, we have Wyatt Williams, who is here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'd ask those in the room to please stand and join us.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge of allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, we're going to have Wyatt just explain real quickly what rank he is, and it's pretty exciting what's happened recently with him.
So, as of right now, I am currently a life scout, as I just received it, and I'm working my way to Eagle, which I look forward to getting.
Thank you so much for joining us. We have an invocation by Pastor Mike Henry from Royal View Baptist Church. Pastor Henry, would you please join us up front?
I didn't see Pastor Hen... Oh. Thank you. You're going to fill in for us today.
Well, actually, I was under the impression I was supposed to be here tonight.
Oh, well, sometimes there's divine intervention in these things, and we're grateful.
Thank you. Mayor Daniels and the council, thank you again for your service. It's a delight to be a part of the leadership out here making a difference, so thank you again. I know you've got a big agenda, a lot of big important decisions, and I'm asking God to give you guidance tonight and that. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for your goodness. Thank you for the privilege of life and the intervention that comes from your wonderful mercy and grace. We ask tonight that you would be with the mayor and the councilmen and women, Lord, to give them guidance. The decisions they make that touch so many men and women will be really influenced by wisdom that comes from you. Thank you for all of it, Lord, and the powerful name of Jesus Christ. Amen. All right, God bless y'all.
Thank you. And that good pastor there joined several other pastors in the town of Gilbert on Friday evening at Freestone Park, the amphitheater, and conducted a really incredible and neat event where they really blessed this community, and it was on Good Friday. It was terrific event, so thank you so much and for all the contributions you're making. The clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
There.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Acquaintance.
Thank you, Lisa. At this time, it's communications from citizens, and I look to Vice Mayor Peterson. Do we have any requests?
Mayor, we have one from Joe Guzik.
Joe, would you please join us at the podium? We will customary, and you know the drill, introduce yourself, tell us your place of residence, and then we will look to the lights for three minutes. Thank you.
Joe Guzik, Gilbert resident, Mayor Daniels, fellow of Town Council members, all Gilbert staff, residents, and guests of our beautiful community. As I said, my name is Joe Guzik, and I'm your lovable, slightly annoying American citizen. I'm your education Lorax. Steve Job once said, "My job is not to be easy on people, my job is to make them better." I don't have a job, I have a responsibility. I have a responsibility to not be easy on people. It is my responsibility to make them better. As I have my own little saying, it goes, "I put people in a position to win." As I shared with you about our state retirement plan, my numbers were actually low. But what I want to talk to you about is our next-year budget. I continually hear different thoughts and styles of how to run our organization, our enterprise. So, I ask and then I encourage you to keep an open mind to looking at different possibilities. I hear about this tax rate. I'm not really a fan of a tax rate. I'm more worried about what the levy is. I want to know the amount and how it is invested and how wisely it works. So, there's multiple choices on how to go about doing that. Some people like to take the rate and take it down, 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 down. Others like to take it down and then bring it back up. And then there's another where you kind of keep it level, where people can consistently see that, and that actually has a rate that sometimes is more effective, or it creates a higher levy. It still comes down to the fact, what is the bottom line? The bottom line is, at the end of the day, this is a long-run enterprise, and we should do what is the absolutely very best for this enterprise to ensure that it is not here just for us today, but is long, long into the future. So, as I shared with you that state retirement plan, hm, I actually got the numbers from 1970. The original rate was 5%. So, if you're a state retirement contributor, you're paying 11.5% today, as compared to those people who were paying as little as 2% at certain times during that period of time. The impact, just on the employer's side, for the 683 agencies, just like the town of Gilbert, is $591 million every year. So, there are consequences to bad actions, and I always ask you to be open-minded. I'll share a little quote from you, from one of our presidents, Calvin Coolidge. "A government which lays taxes on the people not required by urgent public necessity and sound public policy is not the protector of liberty, but an instrument of tyranny, condemns citizens to servitude." Some of those individuals in our state have now put people into servitude because they're paying 6.5% more on a retirement plan that should have been fully funded. The sad part is today, as I sent my email into Governor Ducey, and another one went into him, and he read this one, and he said he read it. The reality is, we have to stand up, and we have to make what is right. So, I ask you to look, keep an open mind to all possibilities and all the best ways to run our business the most effective and efficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. That concludes our communication from citizens and moves us to consent calendar. I look to Vice Mayor Peterson to assist.
Thank you, Mayor. We just had three items that I know of to be pulled, number eight, number 11, number 14. I haven't been able to ask Councilmember Anderson if he had any, so we might check that now.
I'm good.
If there are none other, or no other items, Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion.
Terrific.
Mayor, I move to approve items two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, 10, 12, 13, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Councilmember Anderson, we'll ask you to vote by acclamation.
Aye.
That's a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item Eight, it looks like.
Mayor, this project is reconstruction of Al Vista Road between, oh, goodness, what's the street name? But anyway, Baseline Road and about a half-mile south. And so, as staff presented in our February financial retreat, we still haven't figured out how to fully fund our streets repair and replacement fund, which is short by about $10 million per year. However, this project seems like an answer to the question, which is through perpetual debt. In other words, it sets a precedent for funding streets repair and replacement through bonds. I don't support that, especially when you consider that at least when we bond for newly improved streets, most of that gets paid back through developer contributions. If we go down this path of funding repair and replacement through debt, our property tax levy is likely to balloon dramatically. I'm not saying we've decided that, but that would be the precedent we've set. So, you know, I don't have as much a problem with the project, although I don't know that we need to do it as soon as it's recommended. I think we've got time. The street is not in perfect condition, but it's not a problem yet either, and you're not going to save money by doing it sooner because it's full reconstruction. So, I would like to see this funded through the general fund. That's my problem I have with it, and so, Mayor, that's why I pulled it.
Any other comments from council?
Mayor, quick comment. Agenda number item eight is a traffic signal. Am I reading this wrong?
No, but it's the first step in this project, and I'm just trying to point out that we're going down the wrong track. This is planned to be paid for out of bonding, and I just don't think that's the right direction to go.
There's no more comments from council?
Well, Mayor, is that an option, that you're willing to take in an amended motion to have the source of funding change?
I would support that.
Do we need input from staff or anything on that?
Absolutely, we would need input from staff on that. If we're going to change a funding source from the DIES, I think that would be a critical component of the conversation.
To be wise stewards of the taxpayer dollar. Mayor, would you like to just have that motion out there, and then we can discuss it, or what?
I'd like Kelly to... Kelly's here. She's ready to roll.
Mayor, council, if it were desired, it could be a motion to use general fund contingency instead, which would use general fund funding. It may have an impact on the capacity of planned projects for fiscal aid. is our next year budget. I continually hear different thoughts and styles of how to run our organization, our enterprise. So, I ask and I encourage you to keep keep an open mind to looking at different possibilities. I hear about this tax rate. I'm not really a fan of a tax rate. I'm more worried about what what the levy is. I want to know the amount and how it is invested and how wisely it works. So, there's multiple choices on how to go about doing that. Some people like to take the rate and take it down, 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 down. Others like to take it down and then bring it back up. And then there's another where you kind of keep it level, where people can consistently see that, and that actually has a rate that sometimes is more effective or creates a higher levy. It still comes down to the fact, what is the bottom line? The bottom line is, at the end of the day, this is a long-run enterprise, and we should do what is the absolutely very best for this enterprise to ensure that it is not here just for us today, but is long, long into the future. So, as I shared with you, that state retirement plan, hm, I actually got the numbers from 1970. The original rate was 5%. So, if you're a state retirement contributor, you're paying 11 and 1/2% today, as compared to those people who were paying as little as 2% at certain times during that period of time. The impact, just on the employer's side, for the 683 agencies, just like the town of Gilbert, is $591 million every year. So, there are consequences to bad actions, and I always ask you to be open-minded. I'll share a little quote from you, from one of our presidents, Calvin Coolidge. "A government which lays taxes on the people not required by urgent public necessity and sound public policy is not the protector of liberty, but an instrument of tyranny condemns citizens to servitude." Some of those individuals in our state have now put people into servitude because they're paying 6 and 1/2% more on a retirement plan that should have been fully funded. The sad part is today, as I sent my email into Governor Ducey, and another one went into him, and he read this one, and he said he regretted. The reality is, we have to stand up, and we have to make what is right. So, I ask you to look, keep an open mind to all possibilities and all the best ways to run our business the most effective and efficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. That concludes our communication from citizens and moves us to consent calendar. I look to Vice Mayor Peterson to assist.
Thank you, Mayor. We just had three items that I know of to be pulled, number eight, number 11, number 14. I haven't been able to ask Councilmember Anderson if he had any, so we might check that now.
I'm good.
If there are none none other items or no other items, Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion.
Terrific.
Mayor, I move to approve items two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, 10, 12, 13, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Councilmember Anderson, we'll ask you to vote by acclamation.
Aye.
That's a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to agenda item eight, it looks like.
Mayor, this project is reconstruction of Al Vista Road between—oh, goodness, what's the street name—but anyway, Baseline Road and about a half mile south. And so, as staff presented in our February financial retreat, we still haven't figured out how to fully fund our streets repair and replacement fund, which is short by about $10 million per year. However, this project seems like an answer to the question, which is through perpetual debt. In other words, it sets a precedent for funding streets repair and replacement through bonds. I don't support that, especially when you consider that at least when we bond for newly improved streets, most of that gets paid back through developer contributions. If we go down this path of funding repair and replacement through debt, our property tax levy is likely to balloon dramatically. I'm not saying we've decided that, but that would be the precedent we've set. So, you know, I don't have as much a problem with the project, although I don't know that we need to do it as soon as it's recommended. I think we've got time. The street is not in perfect condition, but it's not a problem yet either, and you're not going to save money by doing it sooner because it's full reconstruction. So, I would like to see this funded through the general fund. That's my problem I have with it, and so, Mayor, that's why I pulled it.
Any other comments from council?
Mayor, quick comment. Agenda number item eight is a traffic signal. Am I reading this wrong?
No, but it's the first step in this project, and I'm just trying to point out that we're going down the wrong track. This is planned to be paid for out of bonding, and I just don't think that's the right direction to go.
There's no more comments from council?
Well, Mayor, is that an option, that you're willing to take in an amended motion to have the source of funding change?
I would support that.
Do we need input from staff or anything on that?
Absolutely. We would need input from staff on that. If we're going to change our funding source from the DIES, I think that would be a critical component of the conversation.
To be wise stewards of the taxpayer dollar.
Kelly.
Mayor, would you like to just have that motion out there, and then we can discuss it, or what?
I'd like Kelly to—Kelly's here. She's ready to—ready to roll.
Mayor, council, if it were desired, it could be a motion to use general fund contingency instead, which would use general fund funding. It may have an impact on the capacity of planned projects for fiscal '18, so we would need to look at that if if that were the motion here.
We have historically used fund funding to reconstruct streets. We recognize that from the state legislature, highway user revenue funds have been swept, which have over many, many years, which is actually one of our funding sources for street repair and replacement that we use within our community. So, I I have to go back to the slide that you saw earlier at the beginning of the meeting today, which really proves that Gilbert is a financially responsible community, and we have very adequately and responsibly utilized our tax dollars. So, I'm actually in favor of us moving forward with the agenda item as it's been presented and recommended by staff, and so, we'll entertain a motion however that goes. If there's an amendment, we'll have to vote on that as well. But this time, let's entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item eight, amended to have the funding source be the general fund.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. Councilmember Anderson, we'll ask you to vote by acclamation as well.
Aye.
That motion passes with a 4-3 vote. All right, general fund it is. That moves us to agenda item 11.
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this item, but there may be others that want to speak, so I'll step back for a second and see.
Mayor, if I may. So, item 11, just to tee up, is a second parking garage in the downtown, for those that are following. So, I guess I have a couple of questions. I don't know—Patrick, should I direct these to you, and then you call up who you think is best?
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, you said, be fine.
So, part of the packet has total budget of $18 million, and then the next page has $21 million. Is the—can you help me on the variance of that? What is the total? Is it the aesthetics that's the delta of the total budget number?
Yeah, let me go ahead and ask David Fabiano from our town engineer to come up and address that question.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Taylor. The question—the the presentation and the motion—that the recommended motion was asking for $18 million for the the project. There were some additional recommendations in the master plan that were provided by our consultant that staff did not feel—we —that staff did not support, and therefore, they were shown in there that there were additional recommendations that we weren't recommending that you approved that would have brought the total cost up to that $21 million number you're looking at.
Okay, thank you. I know we were exchanging, but we didn't get a chance to talk, so that—I appreciate that clarification on that. Mayor, I'll have another comment when we're ready for a motion on the on it. But anyways, that's really the open question that I had at this point, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have one one question.
Terrific. Thank you, Councilmember Anderson.
I'd like to know if you could briefly describe what kind of design features are being used to address what we have on the unwanted public safety issues on the top of the current garage. Are there some design features we're including in this garage?
David, I'm not sure we've gotten through all of that piece of design yet. Do we have some design security features on the top floor? We recognize that in hindsight, we probably should have done a little bit more at the current parking garage in design, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Anderson. There are design features that will be worked out during the design that will make improvements to the current design of the the parking structure that exists at Vaughn Avenue in Ash today. The intent is to try to make that so that it's not quite the public nuisance that it can turn out to be at times now.
Which we're sorry to say to the youth in the audience, that means no skateboarding in our parking garages anymore. Okay. Any other questions from council? All right, comments. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this project—the price of this project has more than doubled from the original 8.5 million that's in the current CIP that's been issued to over $18 million, as reflected here. And we've had a lot of discussion on this, and I don't want to go around in circles. So, there's a lot to be said, but for me, the bottom line is that until I see a report that shows that there's a net ROI on all of the taxpayer investments in the downtown, I'm going to go with my gut that says that it's a major loss for the taxpayers, especially as we see these costs escalating so much. So, that's that's my feeling on this, Mayor, and with that, I'm ready to listen to others.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments from council? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. So, you know, I share that concern too. I mean, fundamentally, we've put how many millions into the downtown, and I realize in an economic development discussion, things are a little vague, you know, this visionary, we don't have tight numbers. But, you know, when we're talking this type of magnitude, I think we should start to zero in on, well, what are the taxpayers doing or getting out of this deal, right? And so, what are our anticipated receipts from the businesses, or the taxes, or some things like that? And asking staff about that, that's not really clear, but certainly, there's some pretty big dollars, you know, $18 million, that's not a small investment, and neither was the the prior parking garage or the other big investments. The other thing that concerns me a little bit is, I know we've talked and we have a report a little bit on how parking's going to get paid for down there, right? Is it all on the on the taxpayers? I think, you know, right now, we're saying, well, for the next five years, it is. But what are the businesses doing to contribute this? They're certainly getting a huge benefit. Their real estate values are going to go up tremendously, you know, their business is going to very much thrive, and that's part of the part of the deal, right? I mean, we want success to happen there. But is there any skin in the game on their side, or are they just going to continue the expectation that taxpayers are just going to continue that? So, I'm reticent to move forward until we get a little bit of cost containment in it and some clarity on Vice Mayor's point as, okay, what is the return on this? And then also, a little bit more clarity on, is there going to be some skin in the game from the businesses that are really, really benefiting? I'm not saying they shoulder the whole thing. Smaller is what I'm thinking, but I'd love to have more discussion on that. Those are my thoughts, Mayor, initially on this.
Thank you. And maybe, David, not—maybe we could ask Amanda, because we are under a development agreement as well to move forward with this parking garage, and there is a contribution in this case from private development. Also, recognizing that adding parking to the downtown is increasing property values in downtown because we're looking to create a much more urban-type environment, a higher-density-type environment. Gilbert's the number-one landowner in downtown, so when costs of land goes up, the town actually benefits from that. But development agreement is probably, for me, the most compelling. So, Amanda?
Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. I think it's important to note that we all met in November in a study session to discuss parking policy, and through that discussion, we had talked about five different mechanisms of funding parking. We agreed to bring back those funding mechanisms in May and are on track to do that.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just to respond to the development agreement, you're right, we have one, but that obligates us to build 100 spaces, not 600. The original plan was to do like 350 or 400. So, I'm—at this point, you're right. I would never vote against keeping that obligation, but it doesn't have to be to the scale that's being proposed, yes?
Mayor, thank you. You know, the one things that I want to share here with the team is that we need to look at long-term vision, because this is, in a sense, going to help the next step, and then the next step as relates to the growth in our downtown. So, this parking garage is critical as relates to the other property where we currently have a temporary parking. So, when the parking garage comes up online, that allows us to go out and potentially sell or go to RFP to generate additional net new revenues for the future. So, this is—I'm not saying it's a domino effect, but it does play a key role in the development of our downtown. So, this parking garage is needed. I can't tell you what 10 years will look like when the next property that we sell develops in the next amount of revenue generation. So, you have to think, I think, long-term and visionary here, that these are key components as relates to development of our downtown. So, I'm very much in favor of approving this agenda item, and I encourage the rest of the council members to do the same thing.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to have to say thank you, Councilmember Cook. I completely agree with everything you said, and it was very well stated, so I don't think I need to say anymore.
All right. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve this item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
All right, that passes with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. That moves us to agenda item 14.
Mayor, there there doesn't need to be a lot of discussion. Same story. Totally support public safety, getting the training and tools they need, just disagree with the funding source. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second?
Mayor, move to approve this item.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
That motion passes with a 5-2 vote. I'm having to do like mental math with adding a voice. It's visual and listening. It's challenging me tonight. Okay. All right. That actually completes our consent calendar agenda item and moves us to the public hearing items. All items will be heard at one public hearing. Council—Vice Mayor Peterson, are there any requests to speak?
Mayor, there are on item 25. That's the only one.
Okay. Any comments from council on 22, 23, or 24? All right, I opened the public hearing on agenda items 22, 23, and 24, and closed the public hearing on those items. Is there a motion?
Motion approved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. That was from Vice Mayor Peterson. Thanks, Lisa.
Aye.
All right, that passes with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. All right, this moves us to agenda item 25. I think we did request that there not be a presentation. Is that correct? I'm looking at Councilmember—
Yeah, Mayor, I don't—I'm not sure we need a presentation on this. I think what would make sense is to have the council debate it or to discuss it if if there's need for a presentation at that point. I can give a quick overview on this if that's helpful, but that will save the attorney some time, and—which means the client saves money in the end. But essentially, what's happening here, this came forward a while ago, the medical marijuana dispensary asking for additional hours and a couple of other things. At the time, Eddie Cook had brought it forward in the council, and I'm generalizing. The council just said, well, let's let's see what the community thinks about it. Let's see versus just a council member or two. And so, over the last number of months, I maybe all of us have been to the dispensary to look at it. One of my concerns originally was the police had given their concerns about this years ago when it first started. Police has since visited it, looked over the records, and they are on board with all of these changes. And so, when the police and fire came forward and said, we're okay with it—for me, that made it that made it okay. But in short, they're hoping to extend the hours of operation from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m., now to 8:00 to 8:00 p.m., so another two hours of operation. They have just one door now. They're hoping to get a second door on the back, which again, police went and Chief Dorn was there and approved it. Now, Chief Bryce has said the same thing. And then also, the ability to sell some other things, some related retail goods. And again, as far as I know, everyone at the town is fully in support of this. So, if council members want to have a longer discussion, it's obviously welcome. We can have a presentation, but I guess my point was, I didn't know that it was needed to have a long presentation on those three points.
Because this is a public hearing, we cannot deny anyone who wishes to speak to speak on that. So, we do have three cards that are requests to speak, and then three additionals that are have voiced support but do not wish to speak. Let's read those names into the record, if you don't mind, Vice Mayor.
Sure.
And sorry, Kelly.
Mark Hale is in support and does not want to speak. Robert Smith is in support and does not want to speak, and Tim Hammer is in support and does not want to speak. And then we're ready for the others.
The remaining three—Lindsey, I think you filled out a card. Mel McDonald, you filled out a card as well, and then I didn't see the final.
And Don Tucker.
Don Tucker. Do you all wish to still have your three minutes? You're—okay. Lindsey?
Mayor Daniels, council members, I can speak on behalf of all of us, but know that we've got a team of people here if you have any questions or additional comments. I think Councilman Ray did a very nice job of talking about the history and how we got here. We've always been supportive of the carefully adopted code. We've been supportive of the two changes that the town has made, the increase in separation requirements. We think those were great additions to the code. You know, the only thing not mentioned, we have 758 signatures in support of this text amendment, residents of Gilbert and other communities around. We have a recommendation of approval from your Gilbert Chamber of Commerce. We worked very hard and long with them, and I feel—you know, part of their letter said that there was compromise on both ends in order to reach where we got to, and I truly believe that it was a long, well-thought-out effort with a lot of stakeholder involvement. 6-1 vote from Planning Commission, and I think that the only thing that's up for debate is in terms of the merchandise sales. From what I'm hearing, interpreting is—that's what we do as land use lawyers, right? I couldn't sue anyone. If anyone needs to get sued, I can't sue anyone. But I think the issue lies in the promotional materials and us selling promotional materials. We'll agree not to sell those. We concede if that is of any form of consternation to—well, obviously, with the Planning Commission of a 6-1 vote, but we would like the ability to sell other merchandise related to the medical marijuana.
Just to clarify with legal, Mike, sorry to put you on the spot with this question, but can we legally limit them from what they can and can't sell within the establishment through this ordinance?
Mayor, members of the council, it is—it is believed so. It's a a prescription-only substance that they're authorized to sell, and and it is—I believe that we can limit it to the ingestion of that substance or the or the methods of ingestion or related subjects or related substances. I think the the concern a little bit with the with the commission was promoting the the use of prescription substances, which is, you know, typically not what you see at a, you know, a standard drugstore, where whereby—and I don't mean to speak inflammatory or crudely in any way, but you don't see T-shirts from Walgreens that say, "Our opioids are the best," or or anything like that. And so, I think that from—I wasn't there for the entire meeting, but the parts I heard, that that appeared to be the the commission's concern.
Mayor, may I add one thing?
Yes.
Mayor, council, and I agree with Mike Campbell and what we heard at the hearing. The promotional materials, though, what I heard was the big issue. We would respectfully request the right to sell—to have a soda machine. I mean, if we can sell a Diet Coke in there or a bottle of water. Also, hemp products is an interesting question because it's not a cannabis product. You can buy it over the internet, but our—my client would like the ability to have educated people sell it. It's not a cannabis. It's a medically-related product. We can only sell to cardholders. I think part of the support from police and fire is that you have to be a medical marijuana cardholder in order to get through the door, and we can't sell to anyone but anyone who's a cardholder.
I think ultimately, that's the question that I'm asking, is that if we make the amendment and allow the change to be able to sell merchandise, they can agree on a, I guess, a handshake that they won't sell certain types of promotional materials, but are we writing that into this amendment?
Mayor, members of the council. Mayor, members of the council, as it reads now, it it permits the sale of merchandise incidental to the medicinal use. And so, that—the way it's written now would prohibit the sale of hemp hemp products or or a soda machine. But I think the intent of the of the of the commission was to limit or prohibit the sale of promotional items.
Okay, so there is a little bit of discrepancy between behind—between what you would like to do and then what the actual amendment to the code says.
And and Mayor, council members, we are trying to work on this language. You know, I would say that for medicinal purposes, that hemp counts. It's a medicinal product. You can get it—again, you can get it off the internet. You could get it in any C2, anything-zoned commercial. You could set up a shop and get that. One of our problems is, we have a someone in Gilbert who came and had a card and wanted a hemp product as opposed to using a cannabis product. As good, law-abiding citizens, we can't—we can't sell that. And I—for your citizens of the town, if they want to choose—if they have an alternative form of medication that they are trying to use in their family, they would like to come somewhere where someone's educated. But if if it suits the—you know, we'll go with whatever the desire of the council is. is.
Other questions and comments from council?
So I wasn't sure I heard you clearly. The way this language is written, saying merchandise incidental to its medicinal use, you're saying that would prohibit like a bottle of water. Is that right? Or would that be allowed? Just want to be clear.
Mayor, Councilman Peterson, only if consumption of water is incidental to the, to the consumption of medical marijuana.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to understand what the intent is behind this language, though. Is that intended to prohibit these other items they're talking about or no?
Mayor, Councilman Peterson, or Vice Mayor Peterson, pardon me. The, the conversation from, this language is intended to permit the sale of items that are used in the consumption of medical marijuana, whether it be pipes or other types of delivery devices related to the actual medicine being distributed by prescription.
I think we have clear statement from our attorney. Is that different than what you were intending?
So to be clear from Lindsey, so this isn't as broad as what you're asking for. Is that correct?
Mayor Daniels, Vice Mayor Peterson, correct. But I wonder, and this is where, you know, Mike and I can put our heads together for a second, incidental uses excluding promotional material.
All right. Let's try this because I think we could probably debate for a few minutes. Let's have maybe you two converse for a minute, maybe outside the doors, and make sure that there's some clarity for us. I'll leave the public hearing open on this item, and we will come back to it. We still have one administrative item on our agenda tonight for fees. So we'll move to administrative item. I guess you guys could probably converse here instead of having to leave the room. We do need our attorney to not leave, so that's good.
We need a couple.
Oh, we have, we have some backups. That's awesome. All right. So we'll leave the public hearing open on that, and we'll go to Agenda Item 26 under our administrative items and look to council. Are there any questions or concerns moving forward? Should we ask staff to give us just a brief update? We've had a chance to review that material and also review it at our financial retreat. Come on up, Kelly. But if you could just give the public a brief overview, some's going up, most of it's going down, if you could answer that for us.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor, council. This is related with the system development fees for our water and wastewater systems. And we have previously done the public hearings and adoption of the land use assumptions and the infrastructure improvement plan. This is the next step in the process, which is defining when the public hearing will be. So we're planning to have a public hearing on June 15th, and then we would have no action taken at that meeting for the system development fees themselves. The action would be taken in August.
Thank you. Any questions for Kelly on system development fees? Vice Mayor?
No, I just want to make a quick comment. Although we have to notice this because one of them is going up, if you average everything out, it's actually going down by anywhere from 5% to 9%, I think. And so, and I'm in the development community, so this, this is, I'm supportive.
I think I heard Vice Mayor Peterson say he's supportive, which is awesome. All right. At this time, we will entertain a motion on Agenda Item 26. He's getting some jostles up here. Yes, Councilmember Cook.
I would like to encourage our team to approve of Agenda Item 26.
I think you're in the safe zone tonight, so that's good. All right. Let's entertain a motion.
Second.
Oh, we had one?
I think that was Eddie making a motion.
That was my motion.
Eddie made a motion. Councilmember Peterson, Bridgette Peterson, all in favor, please vote. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you. That's a 7-0 vote. Maybe we should go to boards, commissions, and committee reports before we stall a little bit here. Any boards, commissioner, committee reports from the council?
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to say a very big thank you to all of the volunteers that work on all of our boards and commissions in the town of Gilbert. It's National Volunteer Week, and I dropped the ball and didn't get a message to the clerk's office to ask them to send something out on our behalf. And I just wanted to make sure that we mentioned it this evening. We have lots of volunteers that serve on our boards and commissions in this community, and we wouldn't be able to do what we do on a regular basis without those members. And so we say a very big thank you to everyone out there that offers their time to this community.
All right. There is a long list of future meeting agenda items on our council agenda tonight, so you can look forward to those conversations.
Mayor, can I ask a question about that?
You bet.
Is there any desire, and you know, I'm always a fan, I made a big, actually, I made a big fuss about this when I was first elected. I'm always a big fan of having dates on these. Can we take a second and see if we can maybe put a few dates to these since we've got some time to discuss that?
Manager Banter?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Peterson, yeah, we actually, I just went over these with town attorney this afternoon, so if you would, we will nail all of those down and have dates on each of these items by the next council meeting.
Thank you. It's the busiest time of year in the municipal world as we finalize budgets as well, so we all know that. We, our agendas get pretty thick this time of year, and so we will be cognizant of that as well. Any report from the town manager and current events? I am stalling good here tonight.
Mayor, members of the council, I've got a couple for you. I'd first like to ask Jolene Fleck to come up to the podium. Jolene is our new chief talent officer. She started with us on Monday, came joining us from the private sector. We're very excited to have her fresh ideas and all of her experience that she's going to bring to bear for our organization. So Jolene, if you could introduce yourself and tell our mayor and council a little bit about yourself.
Sure. Hi, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Jolene Fleck, and I've been in HR for about the past 20 years. I've lived in the community for about as long, originally from Tennessee. Started driving west right after college, the day after graduation, and landed here. Started in Tempe at Rockford Fosgate, spent 10 years there with a great group of people and have served in a few different industries, transportation, heavy manufacturing, things like that, software. And was so pleased when Gilbert called and let me know that they were looking for a chief talent officer, and I'm just so pleased to be here.
Thank you. We've shortened her commute, too, and I think that was probably a big benefit.
Five miles.
Terrific.
Her daughter's birthday is today, Mayor. She's here with us, and her daughter's birthday is today.
Oh, yes. Well, hopefully, we'll have you out of here by 8:00. No pressure. Thank you so much. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Jolene. I'd also like to thank Jacob Ellis, who's one of our assistant to the town managers, who served in an interim capacity for six months in that role, and he did some great work for us in that six months' time. So thank you, Jacob, for the great work. Lastly, I just would like to also, one last time, contradulate the finance and budget team on that bond issuance. It was even bigger savings than we anticipated. I don't know that we mentioned it, but it should, it goes with, worth noting. Bond issuances, when it comes to principal and interest and the total payments made, it's usually around a one-to-one ratio of principal to interest. This bond issuance is going to be a six-to-one ratio of principal to interest. I, in my 27 years, have never seen a ratio that high nor heard of a ratio that high. So that's just outstanding. And again, that's a direct tribute to the excellent financial management of this community and the benefits that accrue to our residents as a result. So great job by everybody, and it's really a tribute to the entire organization and all the employees who helped make that possible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looks like we might be almost ready, councilmembers, to report. Current event?
Yeah, current events, a number of us and town staff yesterday were at Page Park. I recommend everyone goes and sees Page Park. That's behind the senior center, Boys and Girls Club area. APS and the Phoenix Suns just did a project rebound on that basketball court. So it's a brand-new basketball court. It's, it's phenomenal, and I thank you to APS and the Phoenix Suns for doing that. The gorilla came out. Eric Bledsoe was there. Big Sauce was there. It was a fun day, and thanks to Rod Buchanan and his group for, for making all that come together. That's a big undertaking.
Yeah, that was really fun. Councilmember Cook?
Well, I had a, I think probably a meeting or lunch or dinner with the mayor and Bridget the other day, and we're talking about my bread baking skills. And as a traditional Easter, you know, kind of thing, my kids won't let me not do it. So I have some extra here of these love doves because I have a lot of love for our community and our team here. So some of the leftovers to my left, so please feel free to try one of these out. And again, my, my thanks to all of you for serving.
Thanks for sharing, Councilmember Cook. We didn't know, we knew he had lots of talents, we didn't know bread baking was one of them. So that was good to learn. All right. It looks like we may have reached some resolution. Mike, we look to you for assistance.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. The, the language agreed upon would be an amendment to Paragraph 10 of the proposed ordinance to have that paragraph or that subsection read, "Sell only medical marijuana and merchandise incidental to its use." The period. The sale of items promoting the dispensary or its merchandise is prohibited.
I, at this time, yes, Councilmember Anderson?
Mike, could you read that last sentence one more time?
Yes. The second sentence would be, "The sale of items promoting the dispensary or its merchandise is prohibited."
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Taylor?
So I want to, I want to take a little different angle on this one, okay? I'm, I'm reading off the Secretary of State document when the original Medical Marijuana Act was filed. So this is dated May 15, 2009. And I'm appealing to Councilmember Peterson's love of originalist thinking here, meaning what does the plain text read? What does it mean? Okay? Let me read you the plain text here of what the voters actually voted on, because I think it's important and germane to what we're talking about, especially just what just happened here. So there's a lot of sentences. Let me just read the first two, which I think are important. Arizona Medical Marijuana Act protects terminally and seriously ill patients from state prosecution for using limited amounts of marijuana on their doctor's recommendation. That's the first sentence. Let me just add a comment that what we've seen is actually a lot of young people with back pain get these cards. Okay? So the original idea was terminally or seriously ill people, and so that's what the voters actually voted on. And guarantee the voters in Gilbert didn't vote in favor of this, but the state did, its law. So that's one thing that we need to, when we talk about history, that's really important history. Second, second sentence is actually even more important, which reads, "Qualifying patients who register with the Arizona Department of Health Services will obtain marijuana from nonprofit medical marijuana dispensaries regulated by ADHS." And the point I'd like to make on this is it doesn't say "and accessories" or "devices incidental to the partaking of it" or anything else. It just says, the plain text reads, "will obtain marijuana from nonprofits." So I think that's what the voters intended. This is very controversial, passed by a hair. The voters in Gilbert certainly were not in favor of this. I don't think the plain text of this actually allows us to do this. So to me, I think we, we need to consider what the act actually says because it might put us, you know, in a litigious position because we're not actually in compliance with the actual act.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Vice Mayor Peterson?
Mike, can you speak to that? Is that a contradiction to what we're considering here? It, it didn't sound like one to me to be totally frank on that, and I wish I'd had more time to review that. I do appreciate that question, but is there a contradiction with what we're considering in the language that's there?
Mayor Daniels and Vice Mayor Peterson, I'm sorry, I have to, I have to apologize. I was writing vigorously, and so if, if the question could, regarding the, the language that's been proposed, if the question could be summarized again, I'll...
It seems suggested that by allowing the dispensary to sell other items than just the medicinal marijuana, that we would be contradicting the original proposition that authorized medical marijuana in Arizona. Do you find that to be the case?
Mayor Daniels and Vice Mayor Peterson, not having carefully reviewed the, the law or the language or the ordinance or the regulations with that in mind, I am not certain, but I don't believe that it prohibits the sale of items not involving or related items to the prescription that's, that's available at these, at these facilities.
All right. With that, any other comments before we vote?
All right. I'll just make my final comment just so I explain my position on this agenda item. It won't be any surprise to the applicant or anyone else here. I did spend a fair amount of time, last time this came up to us about a year ago, explaining my position on this agenda item. I just don't see the true business need for this. This facility is open seven days a week. There are substantial hours for people to obtain their medication. I really fundamentally cannot support the expansion of the facility in any way, shape, or form. We are complied, in compliance with state law in order to have that facility within our municipal boundaries, and we have spent substantial amounts of time originally developing the ordinance in order to, and had a lot of public input on that and a lot of stakeholders' groups as it related to that. So on this particular agenda item, I am going to be voting no for those reasons. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 25.
Second.
With the changes that, that town attorney has indicated. Do I need to read that? And the changes read, "Sell only medical marijuana and merchandise incidentals to its use. The sale of items promoting the dispensary or its merchandise is prohibited."
And Councilmember Cook, that's an amendment to Subpart 10 of the...
Okay. Amendment to Subpart 10.
I will second that, and I will say that I think that that fits the intent that the Planning Commission was trying to get to.
Mayor?
Thank you.
This is, according to Robert's rules, I can make one more comment during this piece here, and I just wanted to, I just, because I have so much respect for the principles that I know Councilmember Taylor is basing this on, and also, Mayor Daniels, I think you might realize that, or you might not realize, that my feelings about this are probably pretty much the same as yours and Councilmember Taylor's, but it's not my feelings that I'm using tonight. It's my thinking, and my thinking is this. I am a proponent of protecting the public interests. For example, I did oppose the recreational marijuana proposition because I believed it would have a negative impact on those interests. For example, excluding medical marijuana from having a legal blood content limit for purposes of determining DUI, to me, is very bad policy and impacts everyone on the road. That being said, I think limited government means drawing the line between public and private interests. And while I certainly, certainly respect the differing viewpoints, I don't believe that these proposed changes have a negative impact on those public interests. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
That motion passes with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. We have actually totally completed our agenda tonight ahead of, ahead of these agenda items. I failed to close the public hearing, so mark my words, the public hearing was closed. And at this time, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you for attending.